Okay, John Lunt here from the County Tea Party. We're here with John Oder and he is Oderick?
Oderick.
And he is running for Magnolia City Council Position 3. And it's March 14th. And with me is Del Fessman, James Spanners, Bob Bagley, and Larry Rogers. And so why don't we, as we just discussed, John, why don't you get started on with your opening and then we'll jump into the Q and As after that.
My name is John Oder. I've been a resident of southwest Montgomery County for over 20 years. I've lived in the city since 15 years ago. I've heard off and on from different people that there's issues with the city that need addressed, but I'm busy with work and I worked night shift for several years. I didn't really get involved with city politics, but I did get involved all over 10 years ago in state level legislation and participation in the Republican Party due to some issues I was very interested in. Throughout the years, people suggested I get involved, you know, run for office. And I toy off and on for years about possibly running for city council. That's the elected office that I could hold with performing other family duties and work. The issue that really broke the camel's back was the water issue. I've had several people approach me, some pastors and other people about the, I don't even know how to describe it, just the way that the city came out for churches and nonprofits, charging them three times to go and wait for water as a commercial. There's other issues I want to address. The red light camera is going to come down, it's just a matter of when. There's pending legislation in the House that if it passes the way it's written, could come down before the election. And if that happens, that's a significant amount of our budget that we're going to have to come up with somewhere else. We have a huge, not a huge amount of commercial development coming into the city in the next two or three years. And with that sales tax base, I see no reason that we can't transition into a 100% sales tax and eliminate the property tax that happened in Stafford. And it's not going to happen overnight, but it can be a gradual transition. And if there's any questions, you can always call me, 713-502-4953. You can email me at keepmoco, M-O-C-O, red@gmail.com. You can also phone me on Facebook. Hope to earn your support.
All right, great. So tell me about, in kind of the general questioning, how did I approach your city government to be made more efficient and cost effective? You said you had training and have a Six Sigma Pre-Belt.
Yes.
Have you had the ability to look into city operations and see where you can make some important improvements using that background of your Pre-Belt?
I haven't done it too much on operations. I have sat down with Paul Mendez and Lynn George, the City Administrator and City Secretary. They have a pretty much open door policy, so I can come down anytime, use them for research and I'll, you know, see how the departments are run. There's certainly opportunities for consolidating departments or working with departments. There's the 4A and 4B corporations, the economic and commercial developments that we might be able to join into the city and combine resources.
Okay. Tell me a little bit about the Six Sigma and how that works and how you might apply that to governments since you really, you know, haven't kind of dug into that too much yet.
Well, it's basically a, for those who don't know, Six Sigma is something that happens in lead manufacturing to start about to shoot up. And you just look at your processes, look for any waste duplication, and you try to see what can be made more efficient. And I've run across several projects at my company that has improved efficiency dramatically.
Del? Okay, Mr. Oder. Will you vote to increase or reduce the annual city budget? Why? What changes will you propose to the city's budget? You went in there and talked about some things that are, could affect income, but I didn't see a real clear answer as to what changes will you propose in your city's budget. So do you have some specific things in mind? Would you share those with us?
One thing, we have about a $2 million budget right now for the current population of just over 2,000. We have some massive, like I said earlier, massive development coming in and our populations are going to grow as well as the commercial development. We're going to have to increase the budget for especially law enforcement to cope with the added residential growth. The water, getting the infrastructure, there's been a lot of money spent recently because of the widening of 1774. We had to spend several million dollars to move the water lines, 148 widening. There's a lot more money involved having to move the utility lines for Techstock. Running all the new infrastructure, they ran, we ran water and sewer over what's called the Golden Triangle, which is 149 and 148. So these infrastructure putting in place, we'll be able to start recouping that once the businesses are in. And when the new residential developments are in, when we get the impact fees, we'll be able to offset and get that back.
Okay, so you see the budget going up in many different areas.
I'm sorry?
You see the budget going up in many different areas. Where will those resources, those revenues come from for the budget to increase?
The revenues? We're going to have some massive sales taxes. Golden Triangle is going to have an HEB movie theater, hardware store, which most likely Lowe's. We have the four corners at 249 and 1488. We just aim next 48 acres, Catty Corner of the High School, which is going to be a big box store. These massive sales taxes are going to bring in a lot of revenue.
Okay, well, in my kind of narrow view of thinking, sales taxes come from sales which come from people and I'm not going to automatically double my spending just because there's another store in town.
Right now, the, most people are going out of the city limits when they're shopping. We have a couple of nurture stores, but the people are going to notice the shopping, go to HEB or Carrefour, which is outside of city limits. You know, my wife and I, we do a lot of our major shopping. There's, you know, if you want to go to Home Improvement Store, you know, Lowe's and Home Depot are outside of city limits. So there's only, you know, the retail that's in the city limits is more a small base. More of like convenience area than actually massive spending.
And so you, with these new developments, you anticipate shopping within city limits and paying the city portion of the sales tax rather than going outside the city limits and avoiding that sales tax?
Correct.
Okay, James.
It sounds like you have a lot of ideas. I'm sure, you know, we need to hear more about that too. But my question is, what's wrong with the guy you're running against? I mean, he's been doing it for a while. Looks like a really nice person, but maybe some things I don't know. So anybody watching this, what are some very specific reasons why they would vote for you instead of for the incumbent?
What I've looked at in the minutes is votes are almost unanimous. There's nothing wrong per se with my opponent, but every vote is unanimous. So when they did the budget, it's all eyes. When they did the increase in the water rates, it was all eyes. There needs to be some fresh blood in there if you will stir the pot. It will bring up the tough questions and, you know, there should be some dissent, some civil dissent on the city council where there's going to be some tough votes. There needs to be some discussion. It's not just my opponent, it's all five of the council.
So why'd you pick Position 3?
I picked Position 3 when I was told to run. Well, when I was contemplating running, I had a lot of resources in the political field, being involved, people who've run campaigns, candidates, elected officials. They said, "Go through the voting records and find the person who has the quote unquote worst voting record." All three positions have the exact same voting record. I looked to see, I watched the filing day by day and the incumbent for Position 1 had not filed yet, but Challenger had filed. The incumbent for Position 2 filed. The candidate for Position 1 filed for Position 2. That left Position 3, the only incumbent that was unopposed. That's the reason I chose Position 3, not because it was my specific opponent, but because I was the only incumbent position that was unchallenged.
All right, thank you.
Pass.
Is the council under any current bond?
We have $22 million in debt.
Is that for infrastructure?
Most of it infrastructure, there is, I think, $2 to $2 million on the big individual department and everything else is infrastructure. Like I said, they had to spend several billion dollars to move the utility lines for Techstock and to move the widening, 1774 and the widening 1488. So a lot of the, there's a few roads that were used for the bond as well.
How much does the city council pay?
As far as I know, they don't get salary. I think they give a small dividend for meeting that up. I don't believe there's a salary on it.
Any insurance you think they'd get?
I haven't looked into that. I already have health insurance with my employers, I don't need it.
Explain, in one of the general questions, you had asked you three main attributes that make you most qualified and why you run for the position. One of your answers was that, took me a point, that maybe now there's a creation of a new institutional water rate that tripled. You mentioned that a while ago. Could you elaborate on that a little bit? What is the institutional water rate for schools?
There are water rates that have been raised since 2004, I believe, 2004, 2005. And there's two main rates. There's residential and commercial. What the city council did is they took commercial and split it into two forks, for profit and not for profit. So for profit is any commercial development, a commercial user that makes money. So a store, restaurant. A nonprofit would be the schools, the churches, a nonprofit or governmental entity. And they called that an institutional rate. I spoke with one pastor who says his water bills have tripled. And I've heard, you know, the schools, there's five Magnolia ISD schools inside the city limits, they're being affected. There's, I think there's eight to 10 churches inside the city limits. I'm not sure exactly how many, but I think it's within eight to 10. And they're all paying the institutional rate.
And that will be raised by the city, so I guess your muds, they're operating on that?
There's no mud, it's city water.
City water?
It's pay-stricken city.
What would be the reason that the city would really spend weight for that much?
They need money. They came up shore on their water. Like I said, they had to spend a lot of money on it. Improve the infrastructure, they redid the rates since they had done no incremental rates in the last 14, 15 years, they had to create this new water rate.
Okay. Do you know if the city is paying San Jacinto River Authority for water credits?
A half a million dollars last year.
Half a million dollars?
Half a million dollars.
And are they receiving anything from San Jacinto River?
When I read the budget, it looked like it was just pulling it in from the residents and putting it right back to San Jacinto. The same thing with the Lone Star. I don't remember the figure offhand, but they collected the Lone Star, gave it right back to Lone Star.
But you're not getting any services from either of those entities, are you?
No.
Half a million is...
A half a million. I read the budget.
That pays for the...
That's to subsidize, you know, the water treatment plant, the water pipelines that do not affect Magnolia, do not, they don't affect us at all.
All of that money is going to that bond that was put forward before that's increasing and taking care of the woodlands then, correctly?
Correct. This is affecting Conroe and the Woodlands specifically. We are not getting any services for that half a million dollars. It's the city's, the residents are paying it and the city's just collecting and giving it right back to San Jacinto. We're not getting any services for it.
Thank you.
Or racket. Racket. Can you hear me now?
Like I said, the Lone Star Ground Water Conservation District, I have to small amount too, I can't remember the figure offhand.
But San Jacinto is the bigger...
Correct.
The bigger enterprise.
Maybe there's a half a million dollars.
Unbelievable. So I think we know your opinion on, well, I don't know. Do we know your opinion on red light cameras? You said they're going away, but...
I am against red light cameras.
You are?
I am against red light cameras. I've brought it up to certain people in council before and I had a shock when I looked at the budget and revenue from the red light cameras is over $480,000 a year.
In the city of Magnolia?
In the city of Magnolia, which is one red light camera. And the whole purpose of red light cameras, the whole reason they were sold is to help on T-bone accidents and they actually increase rear end accidents when they use the red light cameras. In this particular instance, there's one red light camera at the intersection of 1774 and 1488. It only gets right turn tickets. And most common is, they call it a California stop, which is a rolling stop. So if you're not going to do a complete stop with the light and wait until turn, if you do a rolling stop, you're getting a ticket.
And they generate $480,000?
Over $180,000.
Now, that's the total or that's what the city gets?
That's the gross. The city gets, I think, $350,000 after they pay the state portion and the, I think it's ATS, it's a private company that does it. I've been in the city council meeting before where they talked about the red light cameras. They go, "Hey, just watch the village and go cha-ching, cha-ching, cha-ching." And I stayed before, there's private groups around that have gotten rid of McConroe, you've tried to remove Willis. They've been successful in Baytown, Houston. There's pending legislation that has over 103 authors in the House and it's also in the Senate. The way it's written is of two-thirds vote for it, which already has over two-thirds support in the House, it goes up back immediately. So it wouldn't be September 1st if this campaign had to come down, it would come immediately upon passage. If it doesn't come down this session, it'll be two years, two years from now it'll take it up again or private citizens will try again.
Okay, if that does pass and becomes a law that they're illegal, what happens with your contract that the city has with this private company?
I haven't looked into that information. I'm sure it costs a little, pretty penny to break it.
Okay. Okay, let me understand a little bit more thoroughly your plan or vision for eliminating property tax. Going back to the city, was it Stafford or...
Yes.
Yes. So they eliminated their city portion of the property tax, but the people there still have a property tax to pay muds and emergency services. So there's still a property tax?
Correct. That's not anything that we can do as a city. When you pay your property tax in a county, it goes into, kind of like a pie. Most people, the school taxes, you need the biggest chunk of your pie and you have your city, your county, if you have a mud, if you have EST, Hospital District, Lone Star College, I think there's about eight entities we're paying in Magnolia.
So there still would be a property tax, it's just that the city would not be collecting it?
That's correct. The city wouldn't be operating without that tax.
Yeah, that's, I just want to make sure that we have a common understanding on that.
Yes. Right now, our property tax rate is about 46 cents per hundred, so that would lower the property tax bill somewhat, but, you know, we as a city government came to eliminate property tax. In that sense, we have to lobby the legislature for it.
Switching subjects a little bit, list all organizations, individuals to whom you've contributed. You said several candidates for public office. Is that like two, three, 10? Can you give us names?
If you look at time and money together, given money to Steve Toth and given time money to Marquio, locally, Bob Bagley when he ran for houses, or given some money and time to Katrina Pearson when she ran for congressional seat, Deborah Medina, given money to Alper. I'm sure there's others as well, I just can't think offhand.
Run, Bob.
I don't know if I gave them any money. I did campaign for them, but I didn't give them any money.
Okay. All right, well timed, Mr. James.
When I look at the exoterritorial jurisdiction, ETJ, for Magnolia and looking and expanding it to where there's like a one mile radius, that's not a lot of land. And if you're wanting to go to sales tax, let's say you do get rid of the city property tax, then you have a religious organization comes in and buys up a big whopping part of that commercial property, you know, like the Catholic Church or the Mormon Church comes in. What are you going to do to prevent that?
We can't do anything to prevent it. We're already...
You go back to property tax?
Well, we're not going to pay property tax anyway on theirs, but like I said, the Catholic Church has a church inside Magnolia, the Mormon Church has a church in Magnolia. There's, you know, several other faces of church in Magnolia. I don't think they're going to take prime commercial real estate to expand or get another. They could, but, you know, we're looking at, you know, very big box stores in the city of Magnolia, which are going to get significantly...
Well, let's say that one of those box stores, you know, they move and that property's sitting open and a church wants to come in and take over that property. Are you going to support the church doing that? Are you going to fight rezoning or what are you going to do about that situation? Because they're not going to be paying any sales tax and that's your choice of revenue as a city.
For one property with a church, I'm not going to fight that. Two, three properties with a church, I'm not going to fight that. They're not going to take a lot of commercial spots. And it happens, I've seen it happen on, you know, where a large grocery store's moved and credit void in a strip center. I've seen churches take over those, like the church at Brogansville, or Solus and 45. You know, they, there was a retail...
So if a city manager comes in and says, "Well, this is how much money we're going to lose, our budget can't take it, we need to do something, not make them leave the city, but build somewhere else, so we need to put pressure on the zoning board to zone that to where they have to get special permission and we don't give it." Are you going to support that or are you going to say, "Tough, we're just going to have to suffer?"
Tough.
Well, you need to talk to Oak Ridge North because they do that. They will not let a church come in and take over any commercial property.
That's unfortunate.
Illegal, but you know, who's going to sue?
Well, that's what we, in the past, were talking about with the water rates. You know, if they can charge three times the water rate, let's start stopping from charging $20 a gallon for churches. So yeah, you can come over here, you know, I can put you property tax or impact fees, we're going to charge you $20 a gallon.
I don't have much time here, but I'd like to quickly, what about tax rebate? New businesses come together and blessing you with their commercial presence for sales tax?
We have the demand and we should need to give the exact rates to private businesses.
Okay, thanks. Do you currently not, does the city currently not give tax rebates?
Tax abatements.
Abatements. That's the word I should use, thank you, Bob.
I'm not sure, to be honest, I'd have to look into that.
Are you for those or against them?
I'm against tax abatements.
If there was, if there was an opportunity for a small business to have some tax abatements, would you be willing to do that?
I'm not a fan of tax abatements.
Would you be willing to do that?
I don't believe so. I'd have to live with the whole circumstance, I do not really like to be convinced for tax abatements.
Well, 80% of, 80% of the businesses are small business and we see cities do tax abatements for large corporations, but they never do it for the small businesses, which actually need the help. Do you feel there's enough growth in Magnolia that you don't need any tax abatements for any corporation or any business to come in there?
I don't believe we need tax abatements. We need to make as friendly a small business as possible. They're the ones who bring the jobs. The big businesses are doing everything else, but the small business is what keeps us running. But there's, lower restrictions on the business will help it. I don't believe abatements are necessary. I don't even believe financial incentives are necessary.
City council meetings are going, what, on 17 weeks or...
Once a month. Second is easy, and the third month, seven o'clock.
How many meetings have you been to? Give me a time for that.
I've only been a handful in the last couple of years, to be honest. Regrettably, not attended as many as I should.
Okay. On the debt, your last sentence, you said there's no formal debt policy for the city and we should refer on as soon as possible, such as?
We should come up with a percentage ratio for no more than 10 to 1, no more than 15 to 1. Come to some kind of agreement. If you're spending a $2 million budget, you have $22 million in debt, that's a little excessive in my opinion.
Could it be a zero-based budget?
The budget can be zero-based, but we're going to have to have, we're going to have some bonds. If you're, if you're an individual like all of us, you don't buy a house for cash, you don't buy a car for cash, you buy large appliances on a credit card, you have to be careful on which you finance and which you bond. You know, like some of these school bonds that are bound on a bus, that's going to last 10, 15 years on a 25-year note, I'm not going to go for that. We're going to have to look at, you know, roads and infrastructure for long-term bonds.
In taxes, let me ask, what is the sale tax and property tax rate and how much revenue is delivered to each? Do you think it's a good idea to draw on either or both? Your answer was sales tax is 2% and some is a lot of 4A economic development, 4B community development property tax. Can you just give us a little view of that?
I'm not a big fan of economic and commercial development, community development organizations. You have groups like the Chambers or other groups that try to bring business and development. We don't give the easy tax run for that. If we incorporate that into the general revenue, then I do think that we can start off by, you know, if we take the sales tax, move from economic development, from community development to the general fund, we can start changing the ratio of the property taxes, the MNO and the property taxes, IS, and increase the IS and pay down that debt and eventually work away from that property tax.
Okay. So you're using acronyms, so remember that you're trying to let the people know what...
MNO is maintenance and operations, so property tax is split into two ways. MNO is maintenance and operations, which is like the general fund. IS is interest and shrinking down the debt. So right now, we're paying 46 cents for every 100,000 property tax, 29 cents goes to paying down the debt. If we can give more sales tax to the general revenue, then we can keep the property tax rate at 46 cents and increase how much goes to the paying down the debt. It's like snowball, like with the Dave Ramsey method. You start paying down that debt and you can start whittling off the property tax. So it's not going to happen over nine, but we can get a plan for it.
All right, Del?
What measures do you propose to improve transparency? And you gave a pretty regular view there. I would infer from your answer that you can say, you would say that there's no improvement needed?
I would say no improvement needed, but if you go to the website, the budget's right there, all the minutes are right there. It's... It's very easy to navigate around there. Budget, when you look at it, it's, it's not very vague, it goes in the detail of where all the money goes. So they can always be improved, obviously, maybe, uh.
But you don't have specific suggestions to improve?
Not specific suggestions offhand, but they do a pretty good job, they do a really good job of being transparent.
Is the checkbook online?
The checkbook was online, but it stopped being online a couple of years ago, so that is one good idea.
That you would put forward?
Yes, I would definitely suggest with the checkbook online.
Okay, and then shifting to another question, explain why you do and do not support government-provided financial benefits to non-citizens. You got a good answer there, but not everybody agrees with your viewpoint. So how would you go about explaining, let's role play, okay?
Yes.
Let's say I believe that the, uh, the non-citizen should receive all the benefits that, uh, that I as a citizen receive. And your answer is?
I don't believe that handouts are the role of government. We have the churches, we have private organizations to take care of people in need.
So even for citizens, if handouts are not the role of government, then, uh, no welfare, no food stamps, even for citizens?
Correct. I don't believe in services like that, where citizens or non-citizens.
Okay. Okay, well you, um, so then, you know, I, I lost my job, my house burned down, whatever, and I don't go to any church. So what do I do?
There's a Red Cross, there's United Way, there's organizations you can go to to reach out to. I don't think the government, the government role is not to take care of people who are in need.
Okay. Are there any, uh, businesses you think the city council should work to keep away? Any particular types of business?
I know there are, uh, ordinance about sexually-oriented businesses.
You don't want any of those?
We don't need to have those in the city, there's other places they can go to for.
All right, what about, uh, medical facilities, are those okay?
Medical facilities? We have, uh, urgent care, we have an emergency room.
So you're saying you don't need, you don't want any more as a city?
We can have more.
How about Planned Parenthood, that's a medical facility?
That's not a medical facility.
Yes, it is.
That's not a medical facility, that's a murder factory, that is not a medical.
So now we're being honest, there are businesses that you would actively fight against having a presence, uh, in your city?
Yes.
We've found one, how far do you have to dig to find another one? Can you just tell us what other kind of business or specific? What about Starbucks?
I may not agree with their politics, but I'm not gonna shut, I'm not here to shove an agenda out of his throat. If someone decides that they wanna shop at Starbucks, that's right. But if there's.
What, what if it's a bakery that, um, they will only make cakes for L G B Q T and everything else, but not for heterosexual marriages? Are you okay with them coming into your city?
That's their choice. If that's how they wanna do their business, that's fine, as long as they're not, you know, it's, they're not trampling anybody, but they, if they're choosing only to do a business to one, uh, segment of the population, I don't think they'll be in business very long.
So you're saying you would be for or against, or don't care about the, what do you call the Muslim-type meat places? Halal, ba, uh, not bakery, a halal meat shop, you would be okay with that, or what?
I don't think there's a demand for that, uh.
But you know, you don't, they may come in trying to develop a demand, you're okay with that? As long as they pay their sales tax, right?
No, that's, but, uh, I'm against those businesses, but depends on what they do.
You personally, or you're saying as a city councilman, you would be against it?
Personally, yes, but I don't believe as a councilman I'm gonna stop something like that.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Ron?
You mentioned that you'd only been to a few city council meetings over the past few years, is, is that because of work?
Work and other commitments, uh, family, and I've been very involved in other political activity.
So if you get on this, um, get the city council position, um, is that going to affect your work? And do you have any assurances from your employer that, um, you'll have time available to be able to fulfill your duties?
I discuss this directly with my supervisor and manager and their landlord. Meetings are at seven P M, I took the pool. Schedule's four-thirty P M, so it gives me plenty of time to get home and get to council meetings. And then, but then, if there's overtime needed, they know that that one day a month is gonna, they're gonna have to do it that way.
You mentioned earlier that you've done a lot of night, you've been working nights.
I'm currently on day shift, I worked a night shift in two thousand eight to two thousand twelve, and I've been on days since two thousand twelve.
You're good, thank you.
Uh, John?
Pass. You wore a stand.
I didn't know that was possible, probably lacking your course, your entry.
You did well on your questionnaire.
That's true.
Should the city be funding nonprofit organizations or events?
No, there's, uh, I may have put an answer on that off. There's a hotel occupancy tax, which acronym is HOT. The term on that is heads and beds. There's a tax you pay when you book a hotel room that goes into the HOT fund. The HOT fund can only be used to advertise private festivals or private events that will quote-unquote be heads and beds. There's two small hotels in Magnolia, while they may have a small percentage of tourist business, to me, I don't see these as tourist hotels, I don't see Magnolia as a tourist town. I, I could be proven wrong, but I believe these are probably more, you know, Uncle Johnny's in visit for town, and we don't have, we're in a spare bedroom, he's gonna stay here. We're having some renovations on our house, we need to spend a week out, so we're gonna stay at this hotel down the street. That's, I've actually been, one of the council meetings, they even, someone said, oh, the council, well, let me just get rid of the HOT tax. I wish I was in council that day, 'cause I would've made a motion to get rid of it.
So you have Airbnb's in Magnolia?
I'm sure there probably is an Airbnb.
But I thought that was for tourists, Bob. I'll take this one back, um, a ways, um, the road bond. That was, that was passed, uh, two years ago?
Two thousand fifteen.
Two thousand fifteen.
Almost four years. It was in November, so three and a half.
Um. Were you for or against that road bond, and was money actually used as, um, specified for the bond within your community?
The first draft of it I was against, the second draft I supported it. The two main reasons are the flyover on the railroad tracks at seventeen seventy-four, just north of fourteen eighty-eight. Commissioner Riley was very successful in working with Tech Stop to pull that in, it's either three to five years, that's gonna dramatically improve traffic at that, at the intersection. Another reason I supported the bond is ten million dollars to put in to purchase Rodaway for the Magnolia bypass. And when the Magnolia bypass is created, it'll extremely help the east and west quarter over there. So I can't speak for all the bond projects, but I do know that the, um, the seventeen seventy-four flyover of the, uh, railroad tracks is almost complete, and that's gonna really develop ability in our area. And, you know, whenever the bypass can be put in, I know that he's trying to pull it in with, you know, Commissioner Riley's trying to pull in with Tech Stop, but hasn't been successful yet. But I'm looking forward to that being put in.
I went through downtown Magnolia yesterday.
I'm sorry.
The railroad tracks and the roads on both sides of it, and the traffic lights, and, can't, I, I haven't seen circus quite like that anywhere else. Is there any solution for that?
Well, like I said, um, for the north-south traffic, if you're gonna be able to go past fourteen eighty-eight on seventeen seventy-four, over the railroad tracks, and come back down on seventeen seventy-four to go north. So you're not gonna have to do that funky zigzag going through if you're not going into town. The bypass, once it's created, it's gonna start at two thirty-nine on the east side and go around to the west side. So if you have to go through town, you're not gonna have to do with that intersection, so the intersection's going to see a lot less traffic unless those two projects are complete. I wish I could find a way to design that intersection and take it all back.
James, you're done?
Bob? Do you support term limits versus the council?
I don't support term limits. The voters do the term limits. I don't support someone being in a position for twenty, thirty, forty years, but if someone's a good, uh, a good representative of the people, then, and if people wanna reelect them, then that's their choice. A good, informed electorate is what should determine it.
Do you feel that we have a good, informed electorate? Because we have some people that sit in city council and other, other positions for years, and, um, probably shouldn't.
Need to work on informing the, the electorate. I'm gonna go and talk to as many people as I can to talk about issues. You know, groups like the Montgomery County Tea Party and other groups are trying to inform voters of what's going on, and people just need to get more informed. I don't think it's fair to punish those who are uninformed to.
Do you think, you think the current mayor is doing a good job, or do you need a new one, or what?
The mayor has a good concept in the government. I think he's doing a good job overall, I'm sure I can find someone where I disagree with him, especially on the red light camera issue, because we've had a couple of talks about the red light camera, but he understands what in government. We've, I've seen him talk in city council before about, you know, the role, probably the role of.
So the four-million-dollar budget is fine, or does it need to go down, or what?
It's two million, uh, currently.
That's awful.
And it, it will need to go up to keep up with, with the demand for services, but as it goes up, so will our revenue, I'm gonna keep it, you know, with growth. Budget's not gonna increase just to spend what, it's gonna need to spend needed services.
Like that intersection.
So which, when it comes to roads, anything that's a number of roads, is a Tech Stop maintained road. So seventeen seventy-four, fourteen eighty-eight is Magnolia City, or Montgomery County is not responsible for the roads. We can negotiate with Tech Stop, we can try to communicate with them to help, but, you know, the city of Magnolia and Montgomery County don't build and maintain those two roads.
So the current councilman that you're running against, can you list two or three votes or positions that they've taken that you would've taken differently?
The water rates, red light cameras. Have to dig around, look at a few more issues, but definitely those two.
But you've seen their positions on that, and you oppose those positions?
Correct.
Okay.
James?
No, I'm good, thanks.
You're done? All right, uh, we'll go ahead and wrap it up, uh, you take up to five minutes, I'm gonna close you, and then we'll, uh, come over.
I'm not sure I gave it a five minutes, but, uh, just putting some big question answers. Like I said, I got a lot of vision, it's not gonna happen overnight, but I'll push the, push the difficult questions. You know, once I'm elected to council, you know, these, uh, there will be no rubber-stamping agenda. I'm not running as a Tea Party candidate, or a, you know, I extreme, I hadn't been in the government, I haven't belonged to the Tea Party since it was founded, but, uh, I'm here for the citizens of Magnolia, for the residents, and what they, they will be my ultimate boss. Whatever they want is what they're gonna get. And I, considering our city is more than eighty-five percent Republican, and Republicans believe in limited government, that I believe that, uh, we're gonna see I O I on the issues. Like I said, I'll make my, myself very accessible, my phone number is seven one three five zero two four nine five three. You can call or text me if any questions or concerns, uh, also email, it's keepmoco red dot com. And, uh, keepmoco red at gmail dot com, excuse me, and I'm always here to answer your questions and any concerns.